Okay, if we can, we're going back to Division 50, Operational Services, Department 4171, Funding and Zoning. And Mr. Eddy, correct?
Yes.
Is here with us. You've only been with us a short time, you've been at several meetings.
Yeah, it seems like I'm here a lot.
Either you're doing a great job, or we have questions, right?
It could be a little bit of both. As far as the amendments, since the equipment is going to be handled in this budget year, I don't really have a problem with any of the first amendments. They appear to be in line with the previous several years in terms of overall expenses, so I'm perfectly fine with those.
Very good. Do we have a motion regards to... Just to ask, come in.
So...
Okay. Ms. Sedman made the motion. Mr. Kelleher, would you second that?
Fine.
On the question? Roll call, please.
All right, Mr. Schnee.
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
No.
Mr. Haas? Right here. Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
And Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven one. Moving down to Department 4174, Buildings and Grounds. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, we actually have our new supervisor here tonight. I'd like to call upon him to assist with these items. Mr. Bill McIntosh, who has assumed responsibility for our Buildings and Grounds Department. Okay, for the first three items, with the efficiency projects we've undertaken, these reductions seem reasonable. However, with the cold November we've had, which almost emulates February weather, we may be challenged on the gas number with the reduction here.
But the November weather is November 2018.
Right now. But, so we've been using a lot more gas because the temperatures have been much colder. I just wanted to make a note of that.
Okay.
Now, since I've taken over the department, I've been doing inspections of all our buildings. And the reduction, the maintenance, we had put it up to 50,000. Reduction of 40,000. Out of that number, we also, there's a lot of maintenance items that have to be reoccurring. Sprinkler inspections, backflow inspections, so on and so forth. Roof drains come out of that. Sidewalk repair, which we have to do for the safety of our employees and the public. And a little bit of maintenance can save a lot of money down the road with big repair jobs. So that is a concern that we, you know, if we don't need it, we don't spend it. But if we need it, we'll be coming back to make these repairs.
We also have been doing much more proactive maintenance on buildings. I know since I've been here, we've implemented a lot of new procedures because the bottom line is what you don't fix when it needs attention turns into a much more significant cost if you let it go. So as I think most of you will be able to see, if you look around the campus, we've made a lot of improvements and we've been trying to stay on top and proactively address maintenance issues so that they don't become capital projects as frequently as they have in the past.
Right, and our oldest building is, of course, is the one we're in, 110 years old. Our youngest building is no younger than 30 years old, so we're getting to the point where we're soon going to start seeing a lot of failures. You know, faucets, plumbing, electrical. And we, like Eddy said, we have to catch these early and get ahead of the curve rather than to fall behind. And then it's just going to cost a lot more to do these repairs.
Okay. So we would ask you to reconsider that repair maintenance, the buildings item, and I think the gas item again, because we're a little bit uncertain at this point what kind of savings we're going to see as far as gas usage. The electricity, I think we're okay with saying that we may realize the savings. I'm hoping we'll be able to stay within those limits. It's not an unreasonable amount. As we said earlier, when we presented the budget, we would have preferred to keep the numbers at the levels they were at for '18 until we are able to quantify the savings in '19. But electricity is something where there certainly should be some savings, so we would be willing to go along with the electricity. But the gas right now is uncertain, and we are in a cold year, and I hate to come up short on the gas usage. So the two items, I believe, that we would, we ask you to reconsider are the gas and the repairs and maintenance to buildings.
Where is the actual gas at now? What's the amount?
If I did it right...
Right here.
I don't think that's right. That's it. I think that is right. Is it? Oh, here it is, right down here. I ran it.
We're at...
That's what I got today.
Right now, we're at 25,000.
Any other questions? For Mr. O'Neil and Mr. McIntosh. We have a motion.
I have a motion to keep the gas as proposed.
Twenty-six, five?
Yeah. And I'd like to compliment you with your statement on being proactive because I've been parts of government municipalities that, like you said, they just leave things unaddressed. And that's when it becomes a big problem.
You propose the other amended amounts?
Then keep that the same.
For the gas?
Keep the gas the same and keep repairs and maintenance of buildings the same.
Fifty thousand?
Yeah.
And the other two amended amounts for electricity and water?
Correct.
Use the amended amounts?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to compliment Mr. O'Neil to your staff where, I mean, in the last three or four years, it's changed dramatically.
Well, thank you, and I give that credit to the staff.
With the boilers and everything else that has been accomplished there.
We have a second for Mr. Schnee's motion.
I'll second that.
Ms. Wakus? On the question? Mr. Schnee, second by Ms. Wakus, that the electricity amount would go from 400,000 to 380,000. The gas would stay at the proposed number of 26,500. Water would go from 36,000 to 31,000. And repairs and maintenance would return to the proposed number of 50,000. Yes?
On the question?
Yes.
Well, the 2018 budget for repairs and maintenance of buildings was 30,000. To go to 40,000 would still be an increase of $10,000. So I'm not going to support putting it back to 50,000 because that's an increase of 66% over where it was last year.
That is correct. Because I'm going through and finding things in the buildings that we tackle. And now, we will save a lot of money going in the future. If we do let it go, it's going to progressively, exponentially get worse.
Much of those costs that we're asking for money for are projects that we've already identified. We're not just hypothetically saying, maybe this is going to break, maybe that's going to break. A lot of the costs that we've built into that number are for projects that we've already identified that we feel would be most effectively attended to before they become a significant cost.
Mr. Kelleher?
I was just going to ask where we, where are you at in that column now?
Oh, we're right at the max.
What's the max?
This year's budget of 30,000.
We're at 30,000.
You're at 30,000.
Right.
Okay.
We've actually been at 30,000. We've been...
Okay.
As of last month.
Other questions?
Someone's going to, you're expecting this will be like a one-time cost? You foresee, or Mr. McIntosh, if you can address that?
Oh.
For the repairs, this, my Ms. Houk was talking about, 550, 45. I mean, there's always something to spend on, I get that, but you're talking about stitching time saves nine this year, and next week it may revert back to...
I don't know if I see this as a one-time cost. I see this as a proactive way of addressing maintenance, really, is what it is. I mean, next year, if it turns out that this is time we look and we don't see and identify some of these projects that we think need attention, then obviously we can adjust that number lower. But I don't necessarily see this as a one-time cost. Again, I really look at this as something that we can spend a little money now, or something that could cost us a significantly amount higher a year or two down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Again, we have a motion from Mr. Schnee, second by Ms. Wakus. Line item 550, 38, electricity to go from 400,000 to 380,000. 550, 40, gas to remain at 26,500. Line 550, 43, water to go from 36,000 down to 31,000. And finally, line 550, 45, repairs and maintenance to maintain the proposed number of 50,000. Correct?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
No.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Moving down to Department 4286, Zerren County, 911.
Good evening. I support council's net reduction of 6,000. I just ask and request that you amend the special legal services, 550.19. Zero that line item out and make the 550.45 repairs, maintenance buildings, 22,500. It's still a net reduction of 6,000.
I'll make that a motion.
Mr. Schnee makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Kelleher, second, that motion.
Mind repeating those again, so we all have them?
Special Legal Services, line 550.19 goes to zero. Moving down to next line, 550.45, repairs, maintenance buildings. Instead of $25,000 as proposed, it'll be $22,500, correct?
Correct.
Net savings would be 6,000.
Still 6,000.
Mr. Schnee made that motion. Mr. Kelleher, second. On the question? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Department 4291, Emergency Management. And when we took our break, there was a handout that was placed here. See?
Our director.
Regarding emergency management, proposed budget amendments. Everybody have their information? It's right there in front, I can see one right there. There's one over here, if someone needs one.
The revenue adjustment we're fine with?
Revenue adjustment, line 460.40?
Yes, from 75,000 to the amended value of 82,000.
Yeah, I think that came up during the presentation, correct? We have a motion in that regard, the revenue line item for 460.40.
So...
Mr. Kelleher? Ms. Wakus? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Department 4291, Emergency Management. And when we took our break, there was a handout that was placed here. See?
Our director.
Regarding emergency management, proposed budget amendments. Everybody have their information? It's right there in front, I can see one right there. There's one over here, if someone needs one.
The revenue adjustment we're fine with?
Revenue adjustment, line 460.40?
Yes, from 75,000 to the amended value of 82,000.
Yeah, I think that came up during the presentation, correct? We have a motion in that regard, the revenue line item for 460.40.
So...
Mr. Kelleher? Ms. Wakus? On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous? Now, we're down to expenses.
Okay, the 550.22 telephone internet line?
Yep.
We respectfully request to keep the $24,000 proposed figure. This year, the total costs for 2018 were 23,000. And on the sheet, you could see the breakdown of our phone bill, a couple of the cell phones. Unfortunately, the task force used to pay for our cell phones, but with the change of fiduciary, we now have to pay for the cell phones. We will get reimbursed 100%, but that is a cost that we're going to have to incur. So I respectfully request that we keep the proposed $24,000 in that line item.
So if we're going to get reimbursed, that line item become revenue then?
Yes.
At 45, 72? Cost of the three task force phones reimbursed?
Correct.
Is that all, is that already in our revenue line item somewhere?
Yes.
It's already in there?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So you're fine with the other three?
No, I don't think so.
Well, I was doing one by one, sorry.
Okay, let's have a motion on the floor in a second, then we can make adjustments. Mr. Schnee makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakus, and as for the amendments under column one. Go ahead, Ms...
Okay.
Lucy.
Apparently, I know emergency management, but not building maintenance, so Ed's going to take the next one.
Okay.
For 550, 45, repairs and maintenance to buildings, our costs this year are at about 20, a little over $21,000. Now, there is a cost share there for our hazmat fund, 460, where most expenses are eligible for a one-third cost share. That leaves us at about 14,000 to 15,000, $15,000. And that's based on scheduled maintenance. It's for recurring costs. There are some additional costs, things that came up. Door repairs, we had to fix one of the light posts that was damaged in the parking lot. But it also includes recurring costs such as filters, generator hoses, extinguisher, cost for inspections, dumpster removal.
I think we can see all those on your list, right?
Yeah. So...
As I remember from your presentation, the $30,000, $25,000 was scheduled for roof repair?
Correct.
And if we approve that under one-time expenses, that's the $25,000, that's the differential between your 30 and the five?
That is correct.
Right, correct on that.
That $30,000 figure was low.
Yeah.
I will tell you, we didn't have all these figures tallied, and I apologize.
You didn't have all the figures?
Well, we had the figures, but there were some adjustments made as it went through the process that I'm not, I can't exactly explain, but we had initially put in a higher value for that figure because of these costs. I mean, these are our actual costs, and this is considering, obviously, I'm working right now very proactively to try and get quotes for that roof repair so we can try to get that encumbered before the end of the year. And as also considering the VAV replacements that have to be done in the building to...
The VAV replacements are also on the list for one-time expenses.
Correct, that's correct. So we did take those out, and we're basing this on the assumption that they will be paid for in 2018 with reserve funding.
Okay. Moving down to the next item.
And this is for repairs and maintenance miscellaneous. Again, you can see the items that are listed there. Our total, 2018 actual costs are listed there for you, but in addition to those costs, there are a couple items that got moved into this fund that will be taken out for 2019, as you can see in the narrative below. So I would like to ask council to reconsider a figure of, say, $8,000, which would be half of what we had originally proposed.
How about the cost for the fiber?
The fiber cost, that was taken out.
That was $12,000, is that correct?
That was correct. And again, both of the...
So you're saying you need, you still need $8,000 with the fiber cost taken out?
Well, if you look at the unexpected cost that we incurred this year that came under that line item, it came out to 37, 47. And then in addition to that, we are going to have the, a couple other items that are now going to be moved over into this account because we put them in here after discussions with budget finance, it was determined that they should be in this account and where elsewhere. So there are some small costs.
And I'm going to say again, if you take out the $12,000 for fiber, you're asking for $8,000.
Well, yes, it is not consistent with the original figure. I agree.
Okay.
It is not.
Go down to 560.61, subscriptions.
Okay, that's the subscription line. For this year, we spent 3,060, and the average electric cable bill is 2,760. We had to add into this line account the Microsoft Internet license for 1775 and the prorate internet cost. So we would like to stay at the proposed $4,000. The expected total for 2019 is 4,855, but the 855 will be cost shared from other accounts. So we would like to stay at the 4,000.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Schnee, second by Ms. Wakus, to go with the numbers in column number one under First Amendment. You've heard the discussions from Mr. O'Neil and Lucy regards to the items. Do we have any amendments to that?
I'd just like to add one other thing. Under the repairs and maintenance items for the building, a lot of the buildings, it is covered under the Buildings and Grounds budget. We have the repairs for EMA under this facility, I would imagine, because of the fact that there is a cost share involved. So that we, you know, I want everyone to be aware of that, that there are no repairs and maintenance items taken out of Building and Grounds for EMA.
Do we have any amendments?
I just want to make sure I understand. Just give me the amounts you're asking for. You're asking for 8,000 repairs, maintenance, subscriptions for stay the same, or the other two?
Telephone and internet, they want to stay the same at 24,000?
The phone and internet, that's what our costs are at this point. We're right at our, we're right at our budget figure, and those are not costs that we control. I mean, I have no...
And $14,000 for the repairs and maintenance buildings, which is 550.45.
$14,000.
That's correct.
A lot of those costs are our generator, which were required by law, and also our HVAC system. So that building, even though it's the EMA building, it houses the Emergency Operations Center and the Backup 911 Center. So it's very important that we have to be operational.
Okay. We have any motions for any amendments? Telephone and internet, do we have a motion regarding that? We have the proposed 24,000, the new, the amendment is 18,000. Do we have any motion on that?
I'd like, I'd like to take them one at a time. Can I make an amendment?
We are, we are taking them one at a time. Telephone and internet is 550.22.
Yeah.
And they're saying they need the...
They're saying the cost is 24,000 now.
I'll make an amendment to return to the 24,000.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Mr. Perry? On the question? Roll call on that amendment.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight-one, motion carries. Moving down to the next line, 550.45, repairs and maintenance buildings. The proposed number was 30,000. The amendment was 5,000 with the roof going to one-time expenses, capital. The discussion here, they're proposing 14,000 to go into that line item. Do we have any motions?
I'll make a motion for the 14th.
Second.
Second, Mr. Schnee. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley? Excuse me, Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Moving down to the next line, repairs and maintenance miscellaneous, 550.48. Proposed number is $16,200. The amendment was $4,200 with the fiber cost taken out. Based on the information provided this evening, they're looking at a number of $8,000.
I so move that we take that as an amendment.
$8,000?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Second. Ms. Wakus?
According to her submission, that line item is over here, and they're saying that the amended amount covers the cost.
They're saying $8,000 is what you want in that line item, correct?
That's correct.
That's the request.
We have...
$8,000 was for this line item, repairs, maintenance of buildings.
550.48, the request of county administration is $8,000 at this point.
$8,000, that's what we're voting on. Okay?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Kelleher made that motion, Ms. Wakus made the second. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Braminski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houk?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Subscriptions, 560.61. The proposed number is 4,000. The amendment number is 2,000. The request today is go back to the 4,000, correct? Do we have a motion in that regard?
So move.
Mr. Callahan? Do we have a second to Mr. Callahan's motion? Ms. Wakis? On the question? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bravinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have a motion on the whole thing, from start to finish, from telephone and Internet down to subscriptions. Mr. Snee and Ms. Wakis was the second on that, and we have all the amendments that have been passed, and that will be part of that. Actually, I guess we have all been covered, don't we?
They're all covered.
They're all covered.
Yeah, so it's not necessary. Very good. Thank you. Moving down to Department 4310, Roden Bridge.
54028, the parts, we think we can stay within that $60,000 figure. Telephone, Internet is currently at $4,500, 442453 to be exact. So again, this is something that we don't have control over as far as trying to reduce that cost. I just want to make counsel aware that our current figure expenditure on that line item is currently above the amended proposal. We try to keep all of those figures right on target throughout all of the departments. I mean, I see no reason to factor in any extra funding for fixed costs that we can see a pattern of over several years running. So the telephone, Internet, I would ask you to reconsider that figure. The electricity, we are currently at 22, almost 22,100, year-to-date. So again, I understand wanting to cut that a little bit. I'm hoping we'll see a savings, but at this point, I just want to make you aware that we are probably with one payment left for the year. We are already just slightly over that $22,000 figure. The repairs and maintenance to vehicles, this is a line item that we put in as a result of using third-party repairs in the absence of our mechanic positions. We have one mechanic that is on staff currently, and we have a fleet of 160 vehicles that we try and maintain, so it's virtually impossible for us to do that with one mechanic onboard. So we've gone to great lengths. We've done some RFPs for some basic service, maintenance services such as oil change and filters. We've gotten very competitive pricing, it's working out very well, but that's where those costs are going. And to take that from 50,000 down to zero would eliminate probably 70% of the maintenance that we're doing on our vehicles right now.
Do we have a motion?
Question. Where do we at now with that?
We are currently, now, keep in mind, that account was started in May or June of this year. So it's not technically a year-to-date figure, but from that point to current, we are at $13,000.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For amendments in column one.
Okay.
To maintain the $60,000 for parts, to restore the telephone/internet line item to 4,800.
Okay.
To restore the electricity to 24,000, and to increase the zero amount for the line item of repairs and maintenance vehicles up to $26,000, based on one-half year, Mr. O'Neill's amount of $30,000 from this past year.
Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Reason double that.
I'll second.
Mr. Perry? On the question?
Can I just add one other thing? Bill just brought to my attention, and I don't want to get too technical, I appreciate. On that last item, I believe that I may have mistaken, it wasn't from June, it was from about August. So that probably represents about three months of bills, as opposed to maybe six. I just want to clarify that. I apologize. Bill is our fleet manager.
And how was the much, how much was it, the three months in?
It's about three to four months, we're at $13,000. So I don't mind trying to stay within a proportional budget for the 12-month period upcoming, but I would just ask you to reconsider that based on that fact that-
Mr. O'Neill, how many mechanics' positions are in the salaries from Roden?
We actually have three positions in the salaries.
So there's two positions that potentially could be filled for 2019?
That's correct.
And if those positions are filled, would it be necessary to have this line item?
We have-
Yes or no?
Yes, to some, to a lesser extent, to a much lesser extent, yes. But there would be a need, yes. There are services that we don't have.
We're going to be able to live within the $26,000.
We have a motion, we have a second.
What was Mr. Haas's motion for the-
I'll repeat it for you, please. For the parts, to stay with the number in the First Amendment, 60,000. For telephone and Internet, to go back to the 4,800, correct, Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Electricity, go back to 24,000. And for 55072, repairs and maintenance of vehicles, 26,000. Mr. Perry, second that.
Sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bravinsky?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Ms. Sedman, too.
Motion carries. Moving down to Engineers, Department 4315.
We are okay with the mileage reimbursement for 55029, the 56061 subscriptions, we are okay with. I would ask counsel to possibly consider an adjustment in the engineering architectural fees. We have exhausted that account this year due to, again, a lot of the maintenance that has come up countywide, and there are different costs, landscaping costs, things of that nature. I would ask if counsel would be willing to consider an adjustment to 500,000 for that figure?
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion regarding the expenses for the Engineers Department, 4315?
I move to accept the suggestions made by Mr. O'Neill.
Which would mean line 55018, that number would instead of being 525, it would be 500,000?
Yes.
And he accepted the other two amendment proposals, 500,000 down to 200,000 for mileage reimbursement, subscriptions from 15,000 down to 10,000. That your motion, Mr. Callahan?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Hearing none, roll call. Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bravinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Department 4153, Recorder of Deeds, Revenue, we have a proposed of $158,500. The amendment is 162,500, and that's under line 41518, County Services.
We're fine with that.
Excuse me?
We're fine with that amendment.
We're fine with that. Do we have a motion for that?
So move.
Mr. Callahan, do we have a second? Ms. Sedman? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good, unanimous. Down to expenses under the same department, Recorder of Dates, 5143. Line item 56064, meeting, conference, and training fees. The proposed number was 4,900. The amendment number is 4,000.
All right. The actual cost of the conferences for 2019 will be 4,84392. That's registration fees, hotel fees.
And that was in the memo that you sent forward today?
Yes.
Correct. Do we have a motion?
So move to accept her proposed amount.
Which is 4,900?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wakis? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bravinsky?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Did he say no? Mr. McGinley or Mr. Bravinsky said yes, correct?
Yes, he did.
You didn't say no.
Moving down to Department 4193, the Coroner's Office. Expenses.
Okay. Other communications, that's a set amount that three employees get reimbursed in their paycheck monthly for their cellphones. So the exact amount is $1,440.
What's the reimbursement fee?
It's for using their personal cellphones.
Yeah, but what is the fee, the actual fee?
It's, I believe it's $40?
$40.
$40 per person.
Okay. Moving down, meeting, conference, training?
We're fine with that. We'll try to find more affordable.
Burial benefits?
Burial benefits, we would respectfully request that it goes back to the 225, based on-
Again, I think the information was in your memo that you sent forward.
Right, we're already at 19,650.
Okay. And then 599.37, view and inquest?
That's, that decrease represents 50 views that we would not be able to pay someone to go out on, so-
Where are we at currently? 51,000?
155.
Okay.
That's up to date?
That is up to date as of yesterday, as long as all the bills are in. Because they're independent contractors that bill us, so there, I'm sure there are some bills that are out there.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I move we accept this proposed, we keep the proposed 1440 for 55.
Okay.
55025, we use the 500 for 560.64. We move back to the 225 for burial re-benefits, 599.28, and keep the 70,000 for the view and inquest.
Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Callahan's motion?
Second.
Ms. Wakis? I'll repeat it. I believe Mr. Callahan followed along, so if I'm incorrect, please correct me. Line 55025, other communication, you're saying go back to the proposed number of 1440.
Yes.
Line number 56064, meeting, conference, training fees to go to the First Amendment, which is 500 versus 750.
Yes.
Line 59928, burial benefits, to go back to the proposed number of 22,500.
Yes.
Line number 59937, view and inquests, to go to the First Amendment, first amendment number, which is 70,000, which is from the 75 that was proposed.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis, you second that?
Yes.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Houck?
No.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakis?
Yes.
Mr. Bravinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
8-1.
8-1, motion carries. Moving down to line, Department 4195, Prothonitory. Ms. Holgar?
Small tools and minor equipment, we're fine with. Advertising, I did explain the rule for the termination of inactive cases and our actual cost for advertising. The call of the list this year was $2,993.
Okay.
The decrease in the books, the actual cost for our books next year will be $415.
Okay.
And the wages, nonrepresented, that decrease represents the fiscal supervisor. And as I explained during our budget presentation, it was completely funded with savings from retirement. Going into '19, we were 8,000 below salaries for the whole division.
Even with the new position, correct?
Even with the new position. Since then, we had another retirement notification that will add another 15,000 in savings.
Okay.
So we're going into '19, 23,000 below.
Do we have a motion?
I just want to make sure I understand that last thing.
Yes.
You're going into '19, 23,000 below.
Below overall salaries in the division. Now, that does not take into consideration the contractual increases, but we would have had that impact anyway.
What would you feel is, are you still sticking with the 172, or could we decrease
Since you have a $23,000 potential difference between 2018 and 2019.
So you're saying to, instead of the $38,000 decrease, decrease it?
What they're saying, I think, is instead of 17234, which would include all the 38,000, correct?
Right.
And instead of going to the amendment 134, it'd be something in between.
Could do that.
Is there the, the most recent retirement, you said, would save about $15,000?
$15,000.
So counsel, if counsel would consider removing $15,000 from that line item, from 172 down to 167?
Not 160, 157.
157.
I came so close to doing it in my head. I came so close. And everybody was away, good job. Everybody follow, I did that, I want to make sure you-
157.
Hi.
341.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
But you also said you were 8,000. Before you got the new retirement notice, you were $8,000 ahead. Can't we take another 8,000 off it?
Does that include, but you didn't include the contractual raises?
That's not, yeah, right. That was not including.
These are nonrepresented wages.
Oh, these are nonrepresented, excuse me.
Yeah, but this is overall wages for the whole division.
But this one item is nonrepresented.
Right. But the savings was unrepresented, so it's overall wages.
Your savings across represent and nonrepresent, you're saying?
Right. Right. My savings was total wages for the division, based on 2018 salaries.
Okay, we don't have a motion, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
For?
Okay.
Okay, do you want me to do it line by line?
Please.
Okay, 51015, let's change that to 157,341.
Okay.
Do you want me to do them all?
Please.
Okay. Keep the second one at 1,000.
Mm-hmm.
Third one, the advertising, change, go back to 2,500.
Okay.
Books, I propose $415.
Or fifteen. Do we have a second for Ms. Wakus's motion?
Second.
Mr. Schnee? Just to repeat the motion, Ms. Wakus, if you would, make sure I give them the correct information.
Wages nonrepresented would go to 157,341. The small tools and minor equipment would be as proposed, 1,000. Advertising would go to, back to 2,500, and books would now be $415.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
When you get the rules of civil procedure and the penned-up book, do you have one for each person in the department?
No, one for each department. So, one for clerk records, one for pro bonitari.
Okay.
Okay.
Other questions?
Question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
So, he said we're seeing a net savings of $23,000 with the attrition in retirements in the office, is that correct?
Yes.
Because if, if I could, if I look at that, the proposed increase was 172,341, subtracting 23,000 yields, 149,341 for the Second Amendment, I wouldn't...
Well, he only, he only, excuse me, $15,000 was subtracted, not the 23.
The 8,000 was nonrepresented.
Ms. Houck, bring that up, the additional 8,000.
Yeah, I, sorry, I missed that one.
Okay. But $15,000 was the number because of the retirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Any others?
Thank you.
Going to the next page, we're going to do the record stories first, and then we'll have the sheriff, because he has a lot of information he wants to provide. So, Ms. Hogarth, let's go to Department 4198 first.
Okay, the office supplies, we should be fine with that amount.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's a guess the first year.
Okay. How about the next line item? 59946?
That went to the one-time expenses. That would be to add some additional shelving...
Right.
When some filing cabinets are pulled out of there.
Okay.
I mean, it increases the amount of space we have.
Do we have a motion?
So, move...
Kelleher?
That we take the first 540, 14, 3,000.
Correct.
And 599.46 to zero.
Correct. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second, Ms. Sedman? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Very good. I'll go back up to 4197, the sheriff slash security. Mr. Sheriff, please.
Good evening, everyone. I believe you received my correspondence this afternoon. If you'd like to go through it that way, we can, or I could go as it's proposed on the paper.
Well, I think that everyone has a copy of their correspondence, but please go through the line by line so that...
Okay, great.
...that setup.
All right, so on the proposed First Amendment in regard to the sheriff real estate sale fee, it was proposed that it increase an additional $50,000. My concern with that is, there was legislation passed, actually two legislations, I explained one in my budget presentation that we actually got our increase from. There was also an additional legislation passed that actually now restricts us from collecting our poundage or our commission from properties that are actually state. We have a lot of properties that, you know, plaintiffs actually receive a formal order to stay, that basically stops the sale. Typically, we receive commission on whatever is collected by the other party, we no longer collect that fee. Off of the prior five-year average, that equates to about 38,000 a year. Our average real estate based on the prior four years is 37, so if you put that into each other, it's still well below the First Amendment, it's kind of right in between where I proposed. I'm not against increasing a little bit, again, just trying to be fiscally responsible, I don't want to overstate my revenue. I'm sorry?
What number are you looking at?
So, my proposed was 325, the First Amendment was 375.
And what is the number that you said you would be comfortable with?
I would be very comfortable with 325, however...
However, what number?
If we do want to go up, I think we, I think we can hit 350.
350. Do we have a motion?
So moves.
Mr. Keller and Ms. Wakus? And I assume the motion is for the $350,000 number?
Yes, sir.
Instead of 375 or 325?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Yes, Mr. Haas?
Sorry?
Yeah, I'm sheriff, so the, in our budget as of October, 2018 current was 310,000, has that changed to...
It has, so as of currently today, we are at 395,600.
395,600. Okay, so, so that's even with, has the new, I mean, I see here...
It has not, it takes effect December 16th. We're actually, our next sale, we are going to be prior to it, so we actually do get the commissions from those, all sales going forward, we will not.
Yeah, I skipped over, you did write that down here for us, I apologize for that.
No, no, problem.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion from Mr. Keller, second by Ms. Wakus, for line item 415.41, sheriff real estate sale fee to be $350,000 versus the proposed number of 325, and the amended number of 375. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving down to expenses?
I have to apologize in my haste to get this correspondence out, I actually, after I did it, I actually met with Mr. DeLisandro to go over the position budget, I actually omitted the position. We had a separation of employment Thursday of last week, I took that out of my spreadsheet, I didn't put it in as a vacancy. So, the number I have is actually different that I'd like to propose right now. My original proposed number is 1,822,310. Because of retirement, since this budget was proposed, we did have a savings of 10,588, but the number that I would be proposing as the amendment for all of our current positions would be 1,811,722. And that would be to fund all of our current positions.
Okay.
These are nonrepresented union positions.
Represented positions.
Represented union position, my faulty.
Nonrepresented, managed side.
Sure, 1,811,722.
Okay. Do you want to go down to the next one, please?
Sure. Clothing and uniforms, it was, the amendment was to move it to 32,000. With our CBAs, these are all numbers that come from there, each deputy is allotted 600, each security guard is allotted 375. In addition, we also have to provide ballistic vests under a bargaining agreement, that is where that number comes to, it's within $73 of the actual figure.
The actual figure, 35,000?
Of 30, yeah, it's 35,000.
Very good, move down to 540.70, small tools?
540.70, small tools, it was proposed 14,500. We have a large number of equipment, security-related equipment throughout the county that deals with our access controls, that we are looking to replace, we don't currently have a scheduled maintenance contract for those items, we're actually working on our field purchasing to get under a scheduled maintenance contract. Right now, we're kind of on a case-by-case basis, if something breaks, we have to go out to the vendor and get it fixed, we're, you know, we came close to that this year, we're within, I think, $1,000 of the 14,050. I would just respectfully request that we kept at that amount.
Okay, next. Advertising, 550.30?
Yeah, so, again, I never know that, what that's going to be, that advertising is specifically for new positions, depending on how many vacancies we have throughout the year, would really depend on what that number is.
Are you proposing anything different, or are you just...
I would say just stick with 350, we had a really bad year with turnover, we had to post a lot of positions this year.
55047, repairs, maintenance, machinery, equipment?
Right, so that's actually for our maintenance agreement for our x-ray machines, that's the actual amount, if you saw on the court's budget, they're actually purchasing an x-ray machine, that x-ray machine is going to get added on to our maintenance contract.
I don't think they're going to purchase it unless we approve it, but that's...
They're proposing that they're purchasing it, so I, in turn, have to have that certified by the state, so I also put that in my budget.
And the number you're proposing?
27,600.
Okay. Meeting conference training fees, 56064?
Right, so meeting conference training fees, I don't know if you, if you had heard Mr. Skoski when he brought up the fact that he had to send the probation officers down and they had an instructor come up, we do none of that, we have all in-house instructors for every discipline that we have. The $6,500 is actually to certify or recertify our instructors, we do everything in-house, including maintenance to our, all of our weapons.
So, what number are you proposing?
6,500, we are, I actually went over $23 this year, I believe, of the 6,500, but everything is scheduled next year equals that amount.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
What motion would you say, Mr. Schnee? Let's go down, line by line, wages represented.
What was it at?
1 million...
811,000.
That's correct, it's 722. Okay. Clothing, uniforms? 35,000 or 32?
He said that's a figure, is that 35?
That's correct.
35?
35.
Small tools?
12, make up.
12,000?
Yeah.
Advertising?
200.
200?
Yeah.
Repairs, maintenance, machinery, equipment, 55047?
He said that's a figure, 27.6.
Okay. And 56064, meeting conference training fees?
Keep that at 6,500.
Keep it at 6,500. Mr. Schnee makes a motion that we change the wages represented to 1.811,722 instead of 1.822,310. Clothing, stay at the proposed number of 35,000, small tools stays at the proposed number of 14,050. Advertising goes, excuse me, you're right, small tools goes at 12,000 instead of 14,050. Advertising from 350 to 200. Repairs, maintenance, machinery, equipment, 55047 stays the same, 27,600, 56064, meeting conference training fees stays at 6,500, correct, Mr. Schnee?
Correct.
Do we have a second for Mr. Schnee's motion?
Second.
Mr. Kelleher? Question?
Hey, Brian, again, could you go back over that represented position?
Sure.
What, what happened with that, that it was overlooked or something?
So, when I just sent this correspondence to you, I was very excited to show a savings from my original proposed number, and we just had a separation from employment on Thursday, I had taken them out of my Excel spreadsheet and forgot to put the vacancy in, so that's where that number comes from, it's a difference of 28,341.
So, basically, somebody who's been here and has more seniority, so vacant position would be entry-level position.
And I know you said last, when you approached us last time, you said you had a lot of turnover this past year.
Yeah. This has been our worst year in the past 15.
And I know you explained why that's happening, I feel terrible about that. Do you see some vacancies through next year for like months at a time, how quickly do you...
I, I don't, we're actually going to be interviewing for all of our vacant positions on Wednesday of next week.
Okay.
I hope no one leaves next year.
Yeah.
I do believe that we're going to have one retirement, it's kind of been going back and forth, rumors to be leaving, but that won't be until next year in November, I believe.
And I'm only suggesting, just because if we're going to have known vacancies, which I know is always an unknown variable, but maybe we could trim that down a little bit for the representative, I don't know what, again, what the outlook is, I know it's, it's an unknown, but if, if we're going to have some vacancies for months at a time, is it...
No, we definitely not months at a time, we try to fill them as soon as possible.
And I appreciate that, too, I'm not saying don't, don't, for God's sakes, but just seeing if there was room for to save there.
Sure, absolutely.
So, no.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Everybody clear on the motion? Any questions in regard to that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Brabinski?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Houck?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McInley?
Yes.
Eight to one, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's the budget amendments as far as decreases, et cetera. Moving to the next page, so this is a budget amendments regarding increase in revenues. I believe we have two pages here, yes. We'll start at the top, District Attorney, Division Number 12. The proposed budget, the new proposed budget amount is 110,000 versus 100,000, which is a difference of 10,000, and that's line 41562, ARD application fees. Do we have a motion?
Can anybody speak to the, why the increase in the ARD fees?
I don't see anybody from the District Attorney's office, if you look at the historical background that is provided for in the budget book, 110,000 seems to be pretty much... Mr. Swets?
I'm not trying to speak for the District Attorney, but this was one we already did on her sheet, there's some of these that were repetitive.
Yeah.
So, we already voted for this 10,000 on the changes in District Attorney's sheet.
Very good, stand right there.
Sure.
Run the budget and finance number...
Yep, we did assess...
Division 20?
We did assess our other income, we changed that from six to seven.
Yep.
And we changed the rental land to 40,678.
Yes. So, we have, we have the Department 4114, other income, proposed 20,000 versus 2,000, correct?
Correct.
And then going down to Department 4137, tax collection?
Correct.
Game lands in lieu of taxes and public utility in lieu of taxes, the two proposed increases would be 5,400 and 6,000?
Correct.
And going down to the hotel tax, the proposed increase is 6,000 from 54,000 to 60,000, correct?
Correct.
Any questions in that regard?
I think that was the one, Mr. Parshnik, just wanted to let everyone know that, you know, it's based on 2% of the hotel tax.
Right.
And I had talked to Ms. Hall and Ms. Beers, and I think we're going to get around 58,000 this year, so I didn't have a problem with any of them, but I did speak to people from both departments.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve those three?
Motion.
Ms. Wakus?
Second.
Ms. Sedman? Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bruminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Moving down to Administrative Services, Mr. Parsnick. Bureau of Elections, Forty-One, Twenty. Line Fifty-Four, Fifty-Five, Thirteen, investment income.
This thing about the interest income, I believe that there was an account at one time in Elections, which was a HAVA account. And it might have been getting interest income at one point. But I'm not so sure if there's anything left in that account, so I can't generate revenue as an interest income with something I don't have in there.
So you want us to go with proposed budget amount then?
Yeah, because I don't believe there's anything left in there to generate interest income with.
Well, then we don't need a motion unless somebody wants to support it. Okay. Fine. Go to the next page on revenue increases.
So I have no issue, I have no issue with this as long as council understands that the county's not guaranteed any of this revenue. So it, we gain revenue on this for as many applications as we receive. So I've already hit these numbers that have been in here. And as long as we get the applications in to process it, to gain the revenue, it won't be an issue. But we don't control this. We're not guaranteed anything in it.
Yeah, it's based on other applications yet. It seems to be, if you look at your historical figures, it seems to be appropriate. Correct. We have a motion.
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? Second. Mr. Kelleher?
Yep.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bruminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe is not in the room.
All right.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. The next one we've already approved. Am I correct?
Correct.
Going down to Judicial Records. Holgarth?
I think we're okay on the coroner's. So I'll ask questions to sheriffs.
The coroner, we're fine on that.
Coroner's office is okay with the proposed new number, four thousand versus three?
Yep.
Thank you. Sheriff?
Again, just based off the averages, I'd like to go, I could definitely go a little bit higher. I just, I, that one-eighty-five scared.
What's your number?
One-eighty.
And what's the next item there?
If we can increase that to thirty-five.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So what was the chair?
Mr. Haas?
What's suggested by sheriff?
And I'm assuming that you're going with four thousand under the coroner's for the autopsy reports? And under the sheriff's department's civil mileage fee, you're going with one-eighty?
And a thirty-five for the additional.
And a thirty-five for several additional documents. Correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. We have a second for Mr. Haas. A second. Ms. Wakus? On to question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Howe is not in the room yet. Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bruminsky?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Very good. Going down to Division Eighty, Public Defender. And Mr. Hall is not here. You can see the proposed amount of fourteen thousand versus the new proposed amount of fourteen thousand versus the proposed amount in the budget of ten thousand. And that's for line four, Seventy-Thirty-three, out-of-county charges, and that seems to be in line with the historical information. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Ms.?
Sedman.
Sedman. Very good. Second. Mr. Snee? On the question? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bruminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe is still not in the room. Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, we turn to the next page. One-time costs. These are projects that were in the two thousand nineteen budget. And it would be paid for out of the current reserve, two thousand eighteen. You can see the projects as listed with their costs involved. And the Budget and Finance Department did the information here.
I believe the current reserve is approximately five-point-nine million, Mr. Swets?
Okay. The only thing I don't see in here that's potential to be added would be the fiber cost for the E M A. Do you have any motions?
In addition, there is, on the second page is the X-ray machine.
Well, that's not part of the one-time costs until we get there.
Okay.
But there is another page. Correct? We have a motion.
Are you talking about for the entire list there, Mr. Chairman?
Entire list unless you want to, you can go through it if you wish, Mr. Haas, whichever is your motion.
I would generally accept everything except for Administrative Services, line, item thirty. And I'm looking at the very, the first three things. You got the polling place, A D A project, for eighty-eight thousand dollars. Ten thousand dollars for consolidation, redistricting, then forty-five thousand for voting system peripherals and all those additional things. Again, American Disabilities Act, that's a federal mandate that we have to meet that. Is, are there any federal matching funds? I know Ms. Crispell, I think she left, but I don't know.
Mr. Parsnick is here, though.
Mr. Parsnick, can you speak to that? I do remember her speaking about that in front of the council. It was a very necessary cost.
Yeah, these are the polling places. So we're working with the, we're working with the places to get updated regarding the A D A accommodations.
My wish list, I mean, it's a magical time of year, but my wish list this Christmas season is for the state to take some action and really hopefully overhaul our voting day. And that might even include, allow maybe perhaps public schools to be places of voting. If that happens, they should be A D A compliant.
I also ask for Christmas.
Yeah, it's a huge miracle. I get that.
Good luck on both of those.
Christmas twenty-fifty-seven, maybe, might show up. And all joking aside, though, the A D A, do we have any federal matching funds for that, Mr. Parsnick, or anything like that?
So they had HAVA funds in there, but you're talking about buildings now that are not owned by the county municipalities and stuff. So it's basically either up to them or up to us to make them A D A compliant if we want to continue to vote there. And quite frankly, we don't have a lot of options if we don't use these buildings. So sometimes you're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Is there litigation on this?
Okay. I thought at one time that we had some litigation regarding the A D A compliance.
Well, we've been, we've been working with the federal authorities to make sure that our polling places are A D A compliant.
Right, so we had that litigation. They identified some places and we corrected a lot of those, but there's still more to go.
And I want to be clear, I want to call litigation, by the way.
Yeah, it's not litigation. It's, they gave us.
We're working with the federal authorities to get our A D A accommodations correct.
They came to inspect our polling places. This is going back a couple of years, two or three years or so.
Yeah, I think there was a documentary that was produced in that regard.
There's nothing in court, though.
Yeah.
And that's what I would consider litigation.
Was there a timeline on this? As part of the discussion or whatever it was exactly?
Right, so there were some that were able to be fixed and other ones that were not, that would take longer. And the ones that we identified that would never be able to fix, we were able to move those. So, but there still are some that are long-term that have to be completed on that list yet.
Yeah. It has to be completed this year in two thousand nineteen?
Well, so the sooner the better, I would say. It doesn't have to be this year, but if we're going to get in compliance with every area, sometimes it's better to do them all together.
And then a follow-up then, too, Mr. Parsnick. So for the consolidation slash redistricting project, if we consolidate, can we get out of some of these polling places that are not compliant? Is that on?
Yeah, that's the idea is, I mean, that's the idea is that we're going to consolidate, redistrict, and then that's a one-time cost to be done with it.
Yeah.
And we're going to get into, get into a location where it is A D A accommodating and have no issues. For example, Butler Township had an issue regarding the Little Lee Building where we were for a lot of years. And now they moved into the community center. And then that polling place is now fully A D A compliant, and that's the one-time cost to be able to get those things through.
Okay. All right, very good. So I mean, even with the ten thousand dollar investment there, we might be able to see a decrease in the eighty-eight thousand dollars. I'd like to propose a, instead of eighty-eight thousand, a forty-four thousand dollar expense maintaining the ten thousand dollars. And then the forty-five thousand dollars, the peripherals, that is contingent on, I believe Ms. Crispell said, the new machines that this council's not approved of yet. I would say, put that on hold. I'd say zero that out. But I don't know if you can speak to that.
I mean, there's some items there, folding tables, privacy screens. I think regardless of what machines we have, we're going to have to comply with some of that.
I would say in the voting machines, they have privacy screens built in. It's like the shutter effect, and if you just position them correctly.
I haven't seen them. Have you seen them?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, I mean, the IvoTronic ones were currently used.
Yeah, but, okay.
Again, the contingent on machines, this council is not approved yet.
I haven't seen any proposed.
We're approving money for additional costs that we have not incurred yet.
Okay, so you're saying forty-four thousand for the polling place, A D A?
Yes. Maintain the ten thousand after that. And zero out the forty-five thousand.
And nothing in the voting machine peripherals. Is that correct?
Yeah. And the SAN upgrade, is that, I don't even know where that?
SAN is for storage for the computer?
That's I T.
That's I T, okay.
So that's additional storage information.
Correct.
Question?
Yes.
How did, how did you come up with the forty-four thou, take off forty-four thousand on the A D A?
Because I understand it is a federal, that's, if we have an agreement with the federal government, take action on that, I can see that. But I think Sheila, if we do consolidate some of these polling places and we get out of some of these places that are currently not A D A compliant, then you can see a savings there. So why don't we hold off on, instead of throwing good money after bad, if we do in fact change up some polling places, then we just have an expense there in our budget that we don't need to spend money on. So I would half that out. Let's tackle what we can this year, and then perhaps we don't have to do the hundred percent upgrades.
Okay. All right.
And everything else, Mr. Chair, I would say looks good to me, all the other ones.
So that's your motion. Do we have a second for Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? I have a question for Mr. Parsnick. That eighty-eight thousand for the polling place, A D A, is that in the current budget proposal for two thousand nineteen?
You mean as in the costs themselves?
Is it in the two thousand nineteen budget proposal?
It was, it was, but then it was taken out as a one-time cost.
Okay, but if, if we take forty-four thousand dollars and pay for it out of one-time expenses, where would the forty-four thousand dollars go? The other forty-four?
It wouldn't. It would be taken out.
Taken out of the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. And the same thing for the forty-five thousand dollars for the voting system peripherals, it would be taken out of the budget?
Yeah, because there's nowhere else to get the funding from.
Okay. Everybody clear on that?
So, no, I'm not. So.
Okay.
Would you go through the numbers again?
Sure. What I propose is for the polling place, A D A project, cut that in half to forty-four thousand. The consolidation, redistricting, I get that that is coming down the pike, and we maintain that at ten thousand. And zero out the voting system peripherals, again, because we don't know if we're in fact going to get the new machines. And the ones we currently have are very private if you set them up right.
Thank you.
Yep.
The only question I have is zeroing out that voting system. Chris, she's not here right now, Ms. Crispell. She's not here.
No, she's not.
But I just would like to know if that is for the future voting system or?
Well, if we vote, if we take it out tonight, she'll have an opportunity next week.
Okay, all right.
So it's, nothing is in stone until we vote on the final budget.
And then the other thing is, didn't the public defender, when he was in here, say he needed shelving?
No. He wanted a high-speed scanner, which is down the bottom there.
He paid for shelving on the two thousand eighteen budget.
Okay.
So his two thousand eighteen budget had to pay for shelving.
And the sixty-four hundred dollars was from new client, print client computers.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. The fiber for the E M A, have we made a determination on that? Mr. O'Neill?
I'm sorry?
The fiber for the E M A building?
It was brought to my attention recently that the fiber, some of the fiber work that we had originally budgeted for was completed in the last two months.
It was completed in the last two months, and we put it in the two thousand nineteen budget?
Well, it came out as of, yes, but we don't need that for a one-time cost. That apparently was taken care of. That was done through our I T department. I didn't have much involvement in that. That was a figure that we were given several months ago. And I have recently.
So we're good on that?
I've recently been told that that, that work was somehow completed. I don't have the details on it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Parsnick, are you comfortable with those? Are you comfortable with those new numbers? The forty-four thousand instead of eighty-eight, and the zero for the voting system peripherals?
Well, it's not what we asked for, but it's more than what we're, we're happy with.
And we'll review that with Ms. Crispell, and she'll provide a report for council for next meeting if those numbers need to be adjusted, or we would recommend adjustments.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Haas, second by Ms. Sedman. Any question about what we're voting on, any numbers we're not sure of? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bruminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving for the last page of the packet. Two thousand nineteen special budget proposals. The top proposal deals with the courts. It's my understanding they would like to purchase a new X-ray machine to go into the Penn Place building. That machine would be relocated to Central Corner, I believe. So the machine would still be in use. The cost of the machine is estimated at twenty-nine thousand dollars. The cost would be reimbursed in two thousand nineteen by the A O P C office, the state office. Do we have a motion in that regard?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher? Do we have a second? Ms. Sedman? On to question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bruminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Going down to the next item, non-representative merit increases. The proposal in the budget was three percent, which equates to one-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, seven-twenty-six. The amendment is for two percent, which equates to one-hundred-and-ten-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And that difference would be fifty-five thousand, four-twenty-four. Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to make.
Mr. Kelleher makes a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bruminsky?
Yes.
On to question.
On the question, is this the total amount across the entire county?
No, this is for the general budget. This is for the general budget.
And just, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just because the council approves this, this line item, the manager has the ability to award the merit increases, or are these?
It says, the note underneath there says merit increases placed in line item in each division, increases subject to merit evaluation process.
So I, you know, potentially this could result in zero dollars expended, I mean theoretically, right?
It's in the manager's hands.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion. Mr. Kelleher, second by Mr. Bruminsky. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Ms. Wakus?
Yes.
Mr. Bruminsky?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Kelleher?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
unanimous? That completes the agenda for the voting session. Public comment?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
I believe it's important to note for the record that Councilman Vog started the meeting on the telephone.
Yes.
And then he lost connection on the telephone. I believe it was prior to the Administrative Services vote. And I would like the chair to take note of that for the, for the meeting minutes, that he was not present for Administrative Services going forward.
It'll be noted in the minutes, please. Thank you. Public comment, please. Mr. Snyder, you want to go to the voting, please?
There seems to be some contention over positions that are approved for the year and positions that are created during the current year that the manager notifies council of. Perhaps some modifications need to be made so this doesn't occur. I don't think it's really fair to allow positions to be created and then taken away. This affects lives. The position budget is really supposed to be a budget, not a position list. And it symbolizes the legislatively authorized positions for the coming fiscal year. Perhaps if the budget were to be done properly and approved, and then during the course of the year if the manager wanted to create a new position, instead of just notifying council within five days, it would actually come to a council vote to modify that budget, just like you'd do any other budget that you need to modify. And that would keep things on par, and we wouldn't have this problem. We wouldn't have people being hired and then having their funding removed. people being hired and then having their funding removed. I really don't think it's In the next session, I guess we're going to continue into another work session.
Yes, we are.
I want to go over a couple of things quickly. According to the charter, some of the reasons for creating the charter were elimination of most elected row offices, with functions transferred to professional staff under jurisdiction of the county manager, and it provides for professional management of row office functions, unified control and accountability of row office practices, and opportunities for efficiency and consolidation of operations. Requires all accounts connected with county operations to be under the unified control and management of the budget and finance office overseen by the manager. Section 1207B, it says the Division of Budget and Financial Services shall be responsible for the financial administration of the county government, including the custody and disbursement of all county funds, establishment and maintenance of the budgeting, accounting, and financial management systems, the assessment of real property, other powers, duties, programs, services, or functions that may be assigned by the administrative code. And in section 209, for powers and duties of council, paragraph B.3 gives you the power to create, combine, alter, and/or abolish any county, division, department, bureau, office, agency, or other administrative unit, authority, board, or commission, and the functions, powers, and duties thereof in accordance with applicable law and this charter. Mr. Swets has approximately 10 people directly in his budget and finance department, not including the treasurer and assessors' office. Children and youth has nine fiscal officers and two consultants. That's more than Mr. Swets has in his office. He also says that there is approximately 35 fiscal workers, and that doesn't include about 100 fiscal technicians and other support staff. So basically, he has 10 people, and the rest of the county has 135 people doing financial things for the county. I think you need to listen to what the charter says, and I think you've got to give very, very concerted interest into the resolution Mrs. Howe has brought before you. I think it's following directly with the charter. I think it's going to make drastic changes in the way the county operates and the way the county, it was intended to operate under the charter. And it in no way affects the day-to-day operations of the manager other than changing the policies and procedures of the county, which section 209 allows you to do. This is something that's needed, drastically needed, for the improvement of the efficiency of this government. Thank you. Oh, I have one more thing, something I never, ever thought I'd say. Mr. Schnee, would you please use the microphone? Thank you.
I think we all know my Mr. is not quite as loud as you. Well, we're going to go to the work session. Roll call, please.
Before, I'm sorry, if I could just ask before we move on, next week, we're going to approve the budget.
That's the schedule.
Will we have a corrected position budget to also approve at that time? There were some changes. There were items in the courts, some discrepancies with positions.
I'll have to ask the courts and the
The sheriff said he had a position that was, was not included on it.
We'll, we'll review this, but I, I want to say for the record that, that position budget was reviewed by the courts prior to its submission numerous times, so.
I understand that, but they, you know, we have that discussion.
That's not the issue. The issue is, you want to get a correct
Yeah, we'll review it again. We'll review it again with everybody. The, the position budget will be reviewed by all division heads and the courts and the court, and the comptroller's office, just to make sure that we have everything correct one more time.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Most of the adjourned the voting session? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the work session. Call the order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Braminski?
Here.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Here.
Mr. Kelleher?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Saban?
Here.
Mr. Schnee just left. Mr. Urbin is not here. Mr. Vog is not on the phone. Ms. Wakis?
Present.
Mr. McGinnly?
Present. Roll call, additions or deletions to the work session agenda? I would like to add one item, which I will give you a handout in regards to the 2018 reserve. That'll be number five, just some thoughts about that reserve and how we should be looking to use some of the monies in that reserve.
I mean the budget, I mean the agenda, would that change, Mr. Chair?
Well, I would like to ask if we could just have an update on the children and youth money investigation.
We have
When we get to it.
Okay.
It's up to Mr. McGinnly.
Okay. I would ask anyone on the agenda. It's now 10 o'clock. I think we should respect the time. A lot of the information has been provided already, so I would hope that we would be, brevity would be the tone for the session. And I would ask for a motion to adopt the work session agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second? Ms. Saban, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. First on the agenda, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been told so often that I bring brevity to the table.
Tonight, that better be true.
So, my division report is for, for council. Any questions that, that council has to fill in as well, if you want to email me questions as well, or the division heads. I would note that Thursday will be our, our tree lighting. Please attend. Please bring your families. Please open up to, please bring your friends. Ms. Saban brought to my attention tonight, a great idea to have a menorah lighting as well, in conjunction with this. So I've reached out to Rabbi Kaplan as well to see if we can do something at the ceremony as well. Ms. Chordy, singers are going to be there. Wyoming Valley West singers are going to be there. Bishop Hogan's bell choir, it's going to be a very nice night. So if you could attend, please bring your families. Thank you.
Okay. Questions from Mr. Swets, Mr. Pedri, excuse me. Item number two. We began this discussion a week ago. I think we're in the middle of this discussion. I think I say this correctly, the manager and the budget and finance department have reached out to people to get information. Mr. Swet has provided us with his job description that was part of the budget and finance director position. At this point in time, I don't know if you have anything else to report.
Well, we have reached out to the GFOA, which is the Government Financial Officers Association for Corporate Structure. We've reached out to PFM, which is our financial advisor, for their ideas on corporate structure as well. Brian and I have done informal communications in some of our local sister counties as well to see what, how their budget and finance departments are set up. Ms. Holgarth, I don't know if you want her to present tonight, or you want to do it prior to the vote. This, this amendment would affect her pretty closely, and that's with regard to her administrative code and what she has to do for judicial services and records. She can talk tonight or, or next time, it's up to you.
I wish you would forward that information so people could see that and then
Sure. She actually does have it in writing. You email me that, right, Joe? I'll forward that to council.
Please.
And that's where we're at, on, from the administration standpoint.
I think we can defer the discussion to next, the next meeting.
Thank you. Number three, a letter of support for Camp Louise, and you can see the email that was received here by Ms. Lawrence. These people have indicated they would certainly come to a meeting to deal with anything you would request. What's your pleasure?
They just want our support, right?
That's what, that's what I believe.
Not financial, just?
No. But they would ask for our support to keep the Camp Louise open. The Girl Scouts have now moved away from those types of activities.
Is there a deadline, Mr. Chairman?
No, we can have, we can bring them in in January.
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd make that suggestion.
Okay.
Invite them in January.
We ask them to come in?
Absolutely.
Okay, and we'll communicate that to them, and we'll schedule their meeting in January. Okay? Mr. Swets?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packets is intergovernmental appropriations. It's the last group in our budget presentation, as I sent an email. These are groups that we funded in the past and have sent letters in the past, and the only change in the dollar amount is really in the Penn State Cooperative Extension. They've asked for a 2.7% increase. I don't have the exact amount, but it's around $5,600. The other changes are, if you remember, when we support any kind of transit, there's a 5% increase, and they're on the state year versus a calendar year. So the change in that was that to get Hazleton Transit caught up, we made all the payments we needed to the Hazleton Transit. Our calculation on the budget and finance side was low because two or three years ago, we didn't fund Hazleton Transit, and once we caught up to the correct amount. So it's not that we paid them more money, it's just that we got the right forms, and we have to match. And these matches basically charge the state money that these institutions get. So while there's a big increase, it's just basically mandated if we're going to fund that line, and the only other change, LCC, there's no change to, Council of Governments, anything else, there's no change to. So you're looking at the 5% match for transportation, and the increase that was requested of 2.7% for Penn State Extension.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I, I, didn't somebody mention that one of the supervisors at that meeting, Jane, that the mountaintop cog is breaking up, or is that South County?
The Mountain Council is the greater Hazleton area.
No, that I refer to as the mountaintop Council of Governments.
Yeah, that's
But that's since been taken, you know, a different turn now, Harry, and it seems like the will of the people is going to prevail there.
Well, good, okay, very good. I didn't want to fund something that wasn't there, but I'm glad to see it's an important group.
That's the latest I've heard.
So that's the mountaintop, so mountain is the Hazleton area, not mountaintop. They're two different entities.
Yeah, it's different.
All right, thank you.
Similar name.
I will say that I've reached out to Penn State Extension and asked them for why the 2.7% versus the, the previous amount, and they willingly, he said that they certainly could work with a 2% increase. So that would require an amendment if we choose to go in that direction. Questions for Mr. Swets?
Has the, I have a question regarding the Penn State Extension. Have they asked for an increase at all, Mr. Swets, over these past several years?
They have. I don't think it's been every year, but I think it was two years ago, there was like a 3% increase. It's not the first time they've asked, but it's not every year.
Does council approve that?
Some of these other institutions have not asked for an increase in the past.
I think the only thing that we've really changed was the Luzern Library Association.
The library.
We appropriated $25,000 more last year, and that's the same amount this year, correct?
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Mr. Swets? As we talked about during the course of the budget process, you know, we all know that we have a significant reserve this year due to some one-time situations, whether it be the TIF, the refinancing, or the baseball settlement. As the year closes, we have to make some determinations in regards to that money. Through some discussions with some different entities, I use the amount of 5.8 million, give or take, depending on what some of the one-time expenditures come in, et cetera. Currently, one suggestion is to leave $1 million in the 2018 budget, which will allow for any unknown situations between now and the end of the close of the year. Our capital fund, we know, has been depleted, very much so. We're down to unencumbered funds of about $660,000. So by putting $2 million in that, that would allow the capital fund to at least have a balance where if we had an emergency, we would have some monies that would be available. The capital fund slash voting machines, my suggestion is $1 million. I think many people realize that Governor Wolf has now realized that the voting machines cost a lot of money. He's gone to the legislative leadership in Harrisburg and is making requests in that regard. I would hope that those requests become legitimate in the 2019 state budget, and I still believe that we will have an obligation for at least part of that money. Certainly, I think a one estimate was $4 million to come up with the funding for all the voting machines. So $1 million would be set aside for that particular purpose. Next information is the Capital Fund 911. We all know that we're in the process of moving forward on that. We have selected the consultant. We know that it's going to be a major expenditure. One estimate has been $20 million. I'm suggesting that we place $1 million in the Capital Fund slash 911, which would be like startup money. Hopefully, it would help us start the program without going into some kind of borrowing until we really have to. The next item would be one-time expenses, which we just approved, approximately of $250,000. Once we total that up, we'll get a more firm number, but that's the approximate number. So if you add all those up, that's $5,250,000. If we have a balance of 5.8 million at the end of the year, that leaves us approximately $550,000 potentially, and I'm suggesting that would go into the 2019 budget as part of the reserve. This is only one possible suggestion.
Question. Is that 5.8 million after deducting the $266,000 that we allocated from last week's meeting?
Yeah, because we got $235,000 from the planning zoning, so
Right.
It's about $50,000 differential versus, okay? It's a, but that 5.8 is not exact. That's a ballpark figure, but it's certainly within the ballpark.
And what's the amount that would be generated by the 3% tax increase?
So I thought tonight we presented. It's not necessary to go through a lengthy discussion, unless people wish to do that, but we have to make some determinations going forward, and this has to be part of the discussion as we look for the budget for next week. Any other suggestions, thoughts, recommendations?
I think a suggestion also, and if we can offset the tax increase with a little bit of the reserve. I know it's not best practice, and I'm not asking to devote the entire $3 million, but I think it's an option that we can certainly consider.
Okay. I think it's not a best practice, and once we get more firm numbers, the one-time, et cetera, then we'll have a little better idea. But it's at the will of the council.
A few years ago, Mr. McGinnly?
Yes.
We did prepay the children and youth, and I think that was actually
2.8 million dollars.
A suggestion at the time and helped avoid a tax increase.
It did, but it also created a $2 million deficit the following year.
Right.
So what you're looking at is pushing the tax increase, or potential tax increase, to 2020, or further, depending on how that's done or reviewed. And you have to remember, we have people looking at our financial books to determine our ratings, and obviously, when you create deficits, that's something they look at.
Yeah, and I mean, they did also tell us that, you know, timely audits were essential, and we wouldn't have this year, and they said, oh, well, it's not a big deal this year. So it's a, it's a moving ball, and
It certainly is, but we don't want to create
Sound waste to that.
Issues, I think, for ourselves, but that's, the council will make that decision.
That's what I'm saying, to soften the blow, we could consider that, and, yeah, I think the others are for discussions too, but again, the voting machines, I, it's a federal and a state mandate. Funding should, should come from that scenario.
Well, the funds, I think the federal funds, I think is like 360 or 370,000, which is minimal in comparison to 4 million. I would hope the state would be much more generous in their contribution.
Yeah.
Children and youth update?
Well, I believe we hired the fiscal officer three, and we have one more interview with a former employee. He is away this week, so we're scheduling that next week. After that, we'll speak to the fiscal department over at Human Services, and Lynn Hill, and Brian Swet, after we get that information.
Chris Del Sandro is here with us tonight. He's been an employee in budget and finance for two years, is a budget and finance analyst, was key in putting together the budgets, and key in the, in the, the most recent audits, especially the ones that were on time and unqualified. He's here tonight. Chris, say hello. Chris has taken the position with the fiscal services three officer, fiscal officer three with, with children and youth. He's got a, a big job in front of him, but we're looking forward to, to his, to his service in that location. We, we think that once that position is filled, we're going to be able to continue to move on, on these processes as well.
Question. Has the, question of the missing documentation for that money been referred to the district attorney at all?
I have not.
Okay.
Anyone else? Public comment? Seeing none, we have a motion for adjournment.
Motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Perry, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.